And then. There we go. All right, Dana, can you hear us now? All right?
Yeah, I can hear you, Tony.
It's sketchy, so.
It is a little sketchy, so so just speak clearly.
We're about to set some point. Now you have to send me to the. So I guess we're gonna call this special meeting in the board of selectmen and planning zoning commission to order Wednesday, August sixth, twenty twenty five, six oh three P M. It's gonna go around the table instead of trying to call everybody else. Tony Goldback, chairman of playing going.
Lisa Di Maria.
Uh, Charles, so for a second.
I'm Nancy Howard, Freddie Clark.
Alan Curry, the planning zone. When Gates selected.
Marion State planning and zoning.
Catherine Russell, selectman.
Tim Weely, planning Johnny.
Jonathan Kepner, alternate.
No, we can't see you. Not talking to the rest.
All right, so on item two, the dozen of possible ordinances. So the first one is noise ordinance. I'm gonna be honest, we hijacked this from Old Sable. So there was some questions around town about noise ordinance. This is literally just the hijacking there's like to me. I think like this thought that's about it, but I don't think, did you guys actually see this at a meeting or not? All right, so then no one thinks yet. I didn't know where to begin with.
Tony, should I ask that to be ordinance you lead off and let us know what problem we're trying to solve?
Okay, um, I just heard that there was an ask if there was a possibility of a noise ordinance, and so. Again, I've just presented this to the board of selection. If there was one available that was easy to grab. This is the one. So it's gonna be honest, I'm not sure. My personal opinion on that, I'm not sure noise ordinance are great for the town, pretty hard put force. Cool. I'm not to count, so. That's up to everybody.
I have a question, Zoe. On the complaints, do we get our noise or what type of complaints do we have?
Um, I don't get a lot of noise complaints. Um, there, right now I'm dealing with one particular property noise complaint, and it's more events specific. Um, but it's beyond that. I had another noise complaint probably several months ago, but that was a really specific neighbor dispute that. But that one little bit of a I I don't know how we have to tell them that anyway, but that that in that situation, they had actually gone to police as well already, as well as different people. So that was I haven't looked it through all of this, but I don't know if it's always running. That's specific situation either, but those are basically, those are the two noise complaints I've dealt with last
years. I do recall the board of selectmen, we have had a resident come in a few times with an ongoing complaint that is reported to the police with an early morning backfire, the whole whatever line on a motorcycle, I think it is something like that vehicle of some sort. Um, as also concerns about uh, the the timing of trash pickup at the he's called the first door. Those, I think those would be were the two instances.
Yeah, vehicle, I I also have complaints on that too. The one that you mentioned about the out of town. And then just noisy cars, cars without mufflers, you know, that sort of thing.
I I have a question. Um, would this just apply to the village or the entire town?
An ordinance, so it's the entire town.
So all the way out here in Winthrop.
Just need all the noise, yeah. Yeah.
I like it quiet out here, that's fine. I I I I was just asking, so as as I was looking through the one fold Sabre, of course, it doesn't delineate because they don't have the same type of construct. Um, but we do have people that hunt out here. That was something that wasn't included. I don't think Old Sable has any areas where people use firearms. Um, there it has farming is in there, so that's kind of all encompassing. I guess anything from leaf blower to chainsaw. I it's just that there's a, I I mean, sound travels out here. There's a lot of stuff that you hear during the daytime hours. It's just a seems to me that some things that may be acceptable in Winthrop definitely wouldn't go over very well in town. So that's that's why I was asking if it should be a delineation.
I have some question. I'm just curious. How does, you know, how did this get tabled? How do we, why are we discussing it ordinance today? How did they get here? So we were gonna have a discussion, both planning and zoning and the board of selectmen. They people had asked about the ordinance, so it's here to get this. Okay, so it came from the selectmen, then, so. I'm just, I'm just looking at process. Yes, so they they asked if there was one available. I said the quick and dirty one is.
Let's let's look into it. Probably apply the deep river. But so this was probably the newest one we talked about. The other ones on the agenda have been things like property maintenance, some of those we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, we.
This was basically.
Like I said, like if I get up early in the morning, I want my lawn, I have a real lawn, no water on it, so I don't make my neighbors that. So you just have to be neighborly. I mean, that's that's.
That's the reason for the ordinance, because everybody is 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 neighborly and very. If you don't have it in place, then you don't have the ability to address situations where it can be egregious. Um, and so you need to have something on the books. It's very difficult to regulate noise. There's, uh, the standards are difficult, but um, I think you need to have something in place. Mostly because there have been complaints, some people have concerns, so if we can put some parents around it as far as a process and or some form of a reference standard, it gives residents recourse. Um, I think that the one that you put forward is fairly good. I prefer to see them a little reefer, reefer.
I was.
What I prefer. Um, but I made a couple of comments. Um, one is on penalties. Um, putting a cap on penalties is probably inappropriate because uh, in some instances that become the cause of business, and so you will have people, uh, obviously violate and it's it's that just needs to be addressed, and then the the cost associating with pursuing a complaint. Um, that also needs to be addressed because if you have to do the decimal testing, that's kind of blind in here. You require an expert and equipment and everything else, so, um, really what should happen is there's a complaint brought, the cost of pursuing that complaint should um, be assigned to whoever makes a complaint. Or whoever is the if on their fences prove to be uh, in place, then that they pay the cost of that. It should not be borne by and could potentially be so. You know, uh, less.
Yeah.
The place that don't really have merit if you're faced with having to incur the cost of pursuing. So then perhaps people become a bit more neighborly. Um, one typo in here pertaining to industrial uses. You got the uh, emitter zone industrial and then instead of saying the emitter zone being industrial, it says emitter zone again. So it's just a typo, just just to prove that I read that. That's in the uh, in the chart that says your decimal levels based on the zone you're in and the allowable decimal levels in a in a budding zone. Um, I'm not exactly sure how these things are generated, but I'm sure there's some something to it, but there's a typo in there if we get to a point where we want to put this in place.
I can go back to what's like trying to talk about stuff. So your your recommendation would be to remove the apartments and not exceed a hundred dollars and include any um, anything in the town that's spent to try and remedy this.
Correct. So if you have to retain expert or whatever, if a plaintiff retains somebody um, and it's proven that there is a viable complaint, it should be reimbursed for that. But then it's that, but it's at their risk. Um, so the town should incur the cost, a uh, somebody, the defendant shouldn't incur the cost if they prove that they haven't had violation, et cetera. So we get rid of the silly um, claims. Um, I have an issue with daytime hours. Um, because it basically says that you can make noise from seven A M till ten P M. Um, I think it's a little bit generous when it comes to a noise ordinance. Um, may not pertain to an event or something that's appropriate at those hours, but don't even start worrying up your lawnmower at seven A M. I'm going to comply. And I think the most egregious noise that is admitted today is um leaf blowers, man, lawn trimmers. Um, when you have a quit that's um requires the operator to wear uh, ear protection. It should be an indication that that's going to be an annoyance to your neighbors regardless of the time of day, so. Um, I think we just need to look at that a little more carefully and um, you know, think in terms of what really is a a nuisance that you might want to regulate. Um, obviously it may be tough to chase down that guy with the um will clearly to have his car backfired on Main Street. But if you've got um, individuals that you know, use water and equipment, you know, early in the morning or evening hour and during dinner time, et cetera, and that's something that should be.
Well, I brought you clear. Now, I I respect your buzzer element, and I brought stuff to select the meeting, and I feel different. Um, because you're you're hindering not only the resident, but what about the commercial guys that are out there mowing grass? And you say you can't start mowing till eight o'clock, and you can't, it has to be done by four thirty five o'clock, so to a different piece. You're hindering a contractor also from making a living. And that's where I I think it's wrong. A gentleman over here said he has an electric mower. Okay, well, everyone does not have an electric mower. So I understand the noise ordinance, but we have to let people make a living too. And what about the guy that works nine hours a day and comes home and only has an hour to get his yard moved at six o'clock at night? Um, I didn't get too strict on it. It's gonna, it's gonna hurt our residents and hurt the smaller businesses. It's my take.
Well, I would respond that that's where the good neighbor comes in. If somebody, if you know your neighbor and you know, yeah, works late, you're gonna have tolerance of your neighbor. And a contractor should also be um, uh, aware of you know, the place in which they're working. So but we're the landscaping contractors work with mother nature. They have, they have rigs. And we have two or three rain days, and they have a hundred customers. You have to squeeze them into that certain days where Dwayne Gates or Alan Perry is gonna come and say, hey, my yards are involved. So that's where I I look on that side, you know. I don't want to hurt the contractor. Yes. Then we have friendly neighbors.
Would you be outraged when the seven o'clock and the time of dawn for contractors?
That night, right? Yeah, I mean, what happens, you know, when uh, when the time goes back? And people are still out there sucking leaves at like, I mean, before I retired, I'm getting home at six o'clock and it's dark out and I'm out there with my tractor blowing my leaves. They probably heard me up on Tower Hill.
I mean, seven o'clock, is that reasonable?
Um, yeah, I just don't want to hurt.
I think that prevents this valley for.
Hours that are under, so the hours that are under seven A M to ten P M, so they they are pretty clean. God, sorry.
But that's a, that's why I asked about the delineation between the village, because utilizing a leaf blower in the village is a lot different to the neighbors, affects a lot more people than, as mentioned, like out here on Tower Hill. If we didn't have our leaves blown, you know, s- since, since the state cleared back all the trees with all those leaves, people throw cigarettes, like lots of cigarettes to the sides of the road. And you know, there's a state forest out here, wildfires, all those things. Uh, you know, I'm certainly not gonna go out there with a rake, and I don't expect my neighbors to go out there with a rake to clean Highway eighty. I mean, loud or not, they they provide us a essential service to, you know, to stop the town from burning, you know? It's a, there's a practical, it's a practical, practicality, but but I could see if you said, well, yeah, but not in town. You don't have to have them in town. We're not gonna have fires. Okay, fine. But uh, all the way out to Winthrop and down around, I mean, I think it's just apart from just putting time restrictions on it, I I think it's a necessary evil.
Some of the towns I did some research in, other ones have different hours of nine to ten or something, and then a couple of like this one in East Line, they have a applicant, you know, they have a variance form right in there. So, you know, if you know, you're ready, but you know, we could just come in and, you know, sort of, you're alerting the town or they approve to kind of break the rules. And then finally, they have about noise levels with the um violating cars. It just says, no, no, it's more than ten minutes when your next door residential property. And, you know, they they I allow here sometimes for a long time, guys running across town in farms, or they don't run over the nature, they have a bunch of maybe big trucks, I don't even, and uh, that would be nice to be able to say, we can't do that. Because it's very annoying, and then if it's like a very stinky truck, you know, you're getting all that like carbon dioxide and stuff coming in.
Don't mind that, drive.
Yeah, we don't have it in ourselves.
I concur with that, their office in the parking lot across the street from mine, that many trucks were doing, are broken up in the last decade time. They just, I like, if you go on to Morgan Allen. So that would be maybe we just take out the residential in that part.
Please be.
So I do want to revisit Dwayne's point. Um, can the, the, um, potential be lenient on a business owner over a uh, uh, property owner's rights? Because our noise ordinance um, restricts businesses from generating noise that would be a nuisance to a budding residential property. But if you have a business that comes into a a residential neighborhood, you would be permitted to because that noise is how you do your business. So seems to me, um, we hold to a decimal level within zones. Or throw it out because we're restricting business from generating noise, um, that may in fact be even more, you know, less uh, uh, less of an annoyance. We put restrictions on it. Um, so it's not about residents, it's about businesses coming in from out of town, um, et cetera, so the placing a you know, the the ability of business to make money over a residence enjoyment of their personal property, I think, is problematic. So if it's, if we hold to a standard that is just the generation of noise, however it's generated by whoever and believe it at levels, then that's something that could at least be uh, equitable.
What about generators? Some power goes out, generators all go on at three A M. Those are really loud. So then the whole neighborhood's a violation. Does that become an exception?
I think that is already an exception written in an equipment that is required for health, safety, welfare, and that might fall into that thing. It's also to Tony's point, one of the things where you can be good neighbors. In a, you know, in a point of time hardship. Maybe there is an exception, if you're less likely to get a complaint, but. I think you offer your neighbor to, uh, say they've got a heavy duty lead for it to run across.
Right, yeah.
Hook them up to the power. There you go. And that, and that's where, that's where you get to a point with over over regulating this, trying to find every single situation. Is it in, is it out? I think if you just have some guidelines, typically by a reference standard, um, you have some recourse when there's something that is truly egregious or an annoyance to a lot of tenants that you could you could demonstrate and we want to follow through on. But um, we try to over over regulate with specifics and exceptions, I think we'll, you know, lose any value that this ordinance would have.
I'll be quiet here. We still have a bunch more to go through. Forty lot.
I will be sure about the deficit, what's listed here, if that's reasonable or not. I have kind of no way of assessing that, that this P and C of a point of view.
We had, we had something in our zoning regulations, we had ran it through our attorney, he said it didn't match up with what the state levels were. And he said, so if it doesn't, federal level, that's what it was, and if it don't match, if it doesn't match up with that, it's pretty much unenforceable. So I would say send this to Kansas. Have them look at the numbers if they don't match the federal level. We have to correct the ignorance and something it is wanting.
Now, that ordinance, I think sixty five D B is one of the lower ones.
Right, sixty two.
So I'm looking at a list here, right, a snow blower, hundred and five D B, a chainsaw, hundred and ten, a leaf blower, hundred and ten. Um, and I struggle with you, you know, we're setting a situation where neighbors are just gonna start picking up the phone because they don't like their neighbor and and complaining, and that who are they gonna complain to, and we're gonna come out and do something about it. Well, I struggle with this. Um.
If you look at any chart on on any decimal chart on Google, it there's many charts out there, doesn't matter what you look at, fifty five decibels that they've got here as a, as a daytime high in a residential area is a conversation across this table.
It's a copy.
Decibels, and they're saying if you go above that, that you're in violation.
Well, I'm gonna say coffee per kilo later, fifty five decibels. Um, air conditioner, fifty five decibel. Um, electric toothbrush, fifty. I mean.
So if a conversation is fifty five and an air conditioner is fifty five. We went through a lawsuit in Westbrook when I was there, the zoning officer. Um, they determined that those three units, brand new house, brand new, um, high efficiency condensers outside by the beach, everybody's close together. Children, there was a new house being built next door, and they put the air conditioning units there. There was a fence between them. The owner put blankets on the air conditioning units. They came in at fifty five decibels total, which is like us talking. And that went to court. Because the neighbor next door didn't like the fact that they put a new house there, so they picked on the air conditioner. Yes, now, I say that, that's not what they said in court, I'm sure, but that's what was going on. And the neighbor who didn't like the air conditioning units had a lawn half the size of this room, it would spend four hours mowing them and then be whacking just because he was angry about the air conditioner. You you can't, you have to be very careful with the whole decimal thing, and it says in here, you blow your horn and you're not doing it for the safety of an accident, you're giving violation. Um, motorcycles, cars idle louder than fifty five decibels. I don't know how you would enforce any of that stuff.
Seems to be.
I understand extremes, if you have extreme issues in town. There there might be extremes that you might want to regulate, but.
So the ordinance should be against extremes. Yeah, how do you write it? And then it says against the extremes, not not against, I could see, I tried to build a garage, the neighborhood complained when I snowballed at five in the morning, because, you know, I don't go to work anymore, if I used to. Right? And and a snow blower is what, a hundred and five? How many people snow blow at five in the morning to get to work?
When it's, when, when it's something like weather, when it's something like, um, generators, we're all in the same boat. If one person's out of electricity, somebody else is out of electricity. If there's, I mean, generators today are quiet, they're relatively quiet. If everybody's out of electricity and one neighbor has a generator running and they're nice enough to say, hey, come on over and take a shower, it's that hot water. You don't complain because somebody's got a generator. I didn't spend thousands of dollars on a generator for my home to keep it safe. If the power goes out out for days and days and days because of a hurricane, so other people can complain. We're all in the same boat. So you have to be very careful on how you regulate this kind of stuff.
I think there's, I think there is an element in this for a reason. So there's always created, and so this is uh, things that aren't, don't fall under this, and noise created is a result of an emergency or related to an emergency. So hurricane, your power goes up, that's an emergency. I think that's why that's in there.
But I think you could make a list, six pages of explanations, if you're gonna go that route.
Yeah, that was my, that was my point, is is there's I don't know, maybe there are people that are leaf blowing for joy, but I know even when I get my leaf blower, I I feel horrible because I know that all my neighbors in this little valley of mine have to hear it, and I feel horrible about it. But it's, you know, it's, it becomes a safety issue, you know, it it's like, it's preventing fire. It I I just don't see how any of this is enforceable. I I I understand that we have a couple of bad actors in town that are are kind of stemming a reason for this. But i- it's unenforceable and everything, I mean, everything can be, I mean, I live on Highway eighty, there there there, there's a stone wall across that. At any given time, it's a, it's a hundred and thirty decibels. I, I, it just seems, it just seems to that end.
And we're working very hard here to 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 find a reason to do something that we don't even know people care, I mean, we, in special circumstances.
Well, I think people care specifically, but but it's it's virtually unenforceable. Uh, there's a cost to it. You know, and I mean, that that itself, it's it's like, even if we were to put, we could put decimal meters all over town, I I'm not sure how that works.
Maybe that gets to be part of your uh, uh, your house search. Right? Is go to the neighbors and say what's it like? Why, why is he? And for the record, every boat that goes down the Connecticut River will violate this.
That's what I'm saying, it's 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 a I I mean, I I what, I mean, my thing, I never complained because I couldn't pinpoint where it is, but there's, some people like to do fireworks quite often. Which was blatant, you know, they're explosions, you know, but.
Uh, all right, so I, we may have our input, but um in this isn't a zoning regulation, so it's up to the selectmen whether or not they want to even bring this forward, so.
I think it works for Old Sable because they have the police department that at any point in time can enforce their ordinances. We we don't have that kind of manpower on the, you know, we just don't have that manpower or woman.
And I wonder how much of their time is wasted on, you know, uh, this kind of stuff.
Well, it's a income generator, you know, you have a size of Old Sable, you can walk around putting tickets for everybody that's idling their car, and you know, you've you've uh, you've helped to keep the apartment afloat, but we we don't, we don't have that.
We come from a version that's very broad, and it is just some of the island cars, some of the things we know that are problems in our little town. Change the decimals or the decimals or whatever, like, you know, it could be just a little more attractive. So we're not going after the extreme.
Like, I think Alan's first comment was to thin the south.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we make up a little letter to the residents that gets sent out on occasion? It says, you know, one of the things we like, blah, 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 is be nice to your neighbors. Just here's some guidelines. I think that would help a lot of situations, to be honest with you.
Can I, can I tell us a Smitty story?
You, you don't want that. You got a captain, what is, might as well, you know, Smitty's story.
So there were some people moved into I can't remember, it was floral water or acorn. Um, and the head of household had a refrigerator truck was his business. And generally about once a month for a weekend, he had had to keep his truck running over the week till Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or Sunday. And the neighbors called and uh, talked to the CEO. And we said, you know, nothing we can do. So but he went on and said don't want you to feel unwelcome. Parking truck by the town garage. No, at the time, there were no residences nearby.
Yep.
And uh, you know, during the week, you can leave your pickup truck there while you're out delivering. So anyway, problem solved.
So something, so what you, sometimes there's a solution you haven't thought of yet.
Especially when you didn't have to, have to cause it.
Right.
Deal with the individual complaint, right, and create.
All right, no more comments on noise, move on to non-publicary, sorry. Um, we move on to special events. Special events. So this came um, kind of out of the the planning is only commissioned. We were talking about food trucks and how we wanted come up in town before about food trucks, and we went and looked at Clinton's regulations, and they have a special event slash food truck setup, all of them. Um, so we kind of took that and ran with that. And this would fit in with our hawkers and peddlers um, ordinance that we have already. So they kind of just give us, um, So they kind of just give us, um, I think it was basically an increase in fees. And, um, so there's special permit process through the town halls, they can kind of keep everything in check. That's pretty much the basics, right? I don't think there's a whole lot more to that.
So you guys are planning to combine food trucks with the special?
Yeah, they were two separate ones that kind of fit together and.
I thought we separated them out.
We did. They came from Clinton as one, but we separated them.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they're separate.
Because this fit with walkers and peddlers.
The trucks is going through, that's showing. At the zoning.
Yes.
Regulation, so special events would be.
So we get one of the, yeah, basically. We want these. Yeah, it's for the headaches now. Nothing likes company.
Did this make operational sense? Do you care? Looking your voice, but they have your home too. Well, the food trucks always were only allowing the parks, so the parking that always would be the ones that people come in.
Right, we were, I mean, the food trucks aren't in this part of it, but we were having the same problem with. Could they be down at the horseshoe pit and all that other stuff? So. We're trying to find a way to fit that in because there are food trucks that have, do wanna be in town and there's. So planning is only is working on that part, but this, this, this is more about fair, fairs, carnivals and all that stuff. It's just an upgrade to, as I said, the walkers and peddlers.
Or basically any event that's not the muster, because right now, there isn't really a mechanism if somebody wanted to. Facilitate or host like some kind of community event, like.
You're right, and then they have to go in the parking that's sort of, so.
I I did like the noise clause that's within the special events because then it is specific to, um. An issue that's come up several times in front of the commission. Section three-three.
So in regard to the special, but we'll do, we're doing a food trucks app, right?
Food trucks, no, food trucks are, uh, just a zoning thing, they're not.
And so that one's, so that's not gonna.
No, it was part of this and we took it out.
We, okay, okay. So we're just discussing special, that's special events.
When we have the balloon thing at Daniel's house, remember he was upset about that, right, by a permit?
That's right.
They, but.
We're not gonna talk about, yes. So said, the, um. Thing I think is important here is to, um. Have some accountability with special events because not just health events like the muster or carnival, whatever, to then organize and publicize broadly. As with other events of an organization or whatever and where it. So, um, if. We had a. Uh. A responsibility of the event organizer to notify the abutters of potential. In means, be it parking. Traffic, noise, uh, lights. Uh, certain alcohol, uh, things like that, um, rallies. You know, the, uh. When you would have, you know, long lines of traffic, whatever, is, uh, notification of. The abutters that may be impacted by this. And it's kind of the the good neighbor approach, say, we're having an event, just so you know. Um, it's not to. Proclude, but, um, but to notify so, so an abutter, property owner can plan accordingly and be aware of it. The town event, you're gonna be aware of it. Another event, not so much because it's not calendar. So that day, maybe having a. You know, uh. Prime effect at your home and and some there's an event and quote opportunity that might affect you to your property. So if there's a, a, um, stipulation that you notify your neighbors in some way, either by hand and have. Signatures or notified by mail or something along those lines. Um. Then I think it's, it's, it means that the, uh. People in town would be aware of something if they have a problem that they can talk to, you know, the organizing the event for a remedy and not them that. Be an issue after, like so and so at this event and it. It was, it was noisy. So, um. To me, that would be the only thing is is notification, just like you would have for a a special permit. Is it, uh, for, for, for land use, you would notify your, uh, abutters or anybody that'd be affected by that use. Um, I think it's a separate provision and that's just a, a, uh, appropriate courtesy. And then would give the organizer. You know, uh, essentially. Permission to have this.
I think the town hall and the resident trooper should be kind of, we're gonna require education. Because I have this party issue on the street and the police come out, you know, they kind of, um, graduation party going on.
Yep.
Always better to mark people out. Do we want to add?
Do we want to add a clause that requires the event planner or initiator to pay for police coverage?
That, that's like, that's, that is, that's in here, then it also makes sure that the the fire, the first selectman, the fire and emergency services brought into the town shall determine the appropriate number of fire medical personnel needed. Um. For fire protection and medical coverage. Like, so if the event gets big, that's up to the MS to go, hey, you need, you know, two cops here or whatever.
Right.
So that is in there.
I didn't see the payment. I'm trying to go online here.
Which, uh, which, what do you have there?
I'm, I, the fact that the event planner.
Is that under Article three, securing the safety?
Give me one second. Oh, I had it right there.
They have to have a minimum, but I don't think it says who will pay for it.
So this is Charles birthday party considered a special event? A s- a special event permit is not required for outdoor festivals, fairs, and I should elaborate, conducted on a resident by residential homeowner. Um, but they should say residential or residential homeowner association.
So.
That's what I'm saying, special events is that, um, invited. About it, so. Not open unless you're. Get invited.
So Tony, before we move it, I don't think the, the.
You're right on here. I thought that was in here because we discussed that.
I suggest we add it.
Yeah, so that was, um. It's, uh. EMS.
But it's, it's only counting special events by this definition. It's not. I'll bring up my balloon party, whatever. It's not, it's not if you have a graduation party or or unless it's to a certain amount where you're gonna have a concert. It's not a birthday party where you're inviting family over because grandpa turned ninety. It's, it's not that kind of thing. And it's, and it's not Bushy Hill, which is. That part of, or the part that's in in Deep River, I mean, they're a venue. I mean, they have special events ideally for them to survive a couple each weekend. And, um, I don't believe that they're bothering their buttered neighbors, but do they have to?
Sorry, you're permitted use, so it's not a, it's not a special event.
Yeah, okay. So because permitted use, then that doesn't make it a special event. All right, thanks, Alan.
Could you look at the park and range H two, uh, their, their rules and the back of their, their work useful? Thank you. Just to make sure everything required. Corresponds or aligns with what is now in this.
Hmm.
Because, um. That will be the major. Or does that kind of do this at some of their things or we should have the same line of some parts. And that I think that's, everybody over fifty, you know, if you have over thirty-two people, um.
Yep.
Um, the police chief for them to determine if you needed a police presence and then it was for the department of the applicant to take the police and. You know, we required to know that so many people that have another lifeguard I do to get all that kind of stuff, so. But we should have a whole match.
Very involved, it's in section three-two, I obtained, it's in there.
It's in there?
Yeah.
Like for personal.
So in Article two, it says, there's no person making a special event without having first thing a special event covered from day down. Was an exhibition fair, et cetera, that will occur more than one time per month. Now, that means you can have a festival at your home once a month without obtaining a permit. So, um, seems to me. A, a special event, you can have it once a year. And, you know, it's like, it, it, I think it's the size of the event. Not the frequency of it, uh, something that's going to impact traffic patterns, noise, et cetera. So, um, and I think a distinguishing factor between. A graduation party or birthday party is that the public is invited to attend. Um. To me, it's the distinguishing factor is that it's, um. Um, of a scale. That requires a regulation.
What else? All right, went on. Property maintenance and light. So. I, I can't remember where we snuck this one from. I wanna say it's Essex.
This is gonna be the trickiest.
This is the turkey is one of those. Well, they, okay, you know what? You're right, this one. And we spent a lot of time reading a bunch of stuff out of this. Uh. So there was no beef thing in there, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
When I read it, I. My mind is leading me into as well, are we going to manage this? Because I don't believe we have a person. Right now, who could, who could do this?
But it can't, it can't be, so like, so it can't be your only enforcement officer and it can't be, uh, it's not a person, it can't be, right?
Well, I like the idea of having the evidence. I just think we need to figure out how an operational wise to do it.
That's what it is. It's so you can achieve the, you have to have, somebody can write the citations and then you also have to have somebody they can appeal to and that works and can't be the only enforcement officer.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Yeah, I can.
He's something to figure out. If we combined all enforcement boards, so would that work?
Sure, it can't be your bike state statute.
Yeah.
No, and I'm saying, if I'm thinking of the appeals board, we have to. So we need an officer and a unified appeal.
So, yeah, because the zoning part of appeals is specific to the decision of the zoning officer. I. Would have to do some research to confirm, but I don't believe that that would translate to like appeal of a plate. Citation. I don't think that.
I don't think we should be deterred just because we can't operationally yet, once we can figure that out. We should be want to do this.
As, as I remember, we, we were kind of happy with what we had trimmed it down to, apart from the enforcement issue, but we were left with, um, the fines. The, the, we didn't have a fine schedule. Is that, does anybody else remember it that way? I, I, I felt that because we, because we cut it down in size. We had Clintons, we had, we had Essex, we had a few of them. And 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 we got this down to the language that we were happy with, but it references fines that we don't actually have a fine schedule for.
Um, so we don't want to pick the fines that they were considering.
No. Yeah, so it's a reference of the fine schedule, so that would have to be right, that would have to be done separately.
Right, I, I thought that's kind of where we left. I thought we were kind of happy with this one.
Yeah.
Uh, the way it, you're, it's just, we just don't know what the fines are to assign to it and enforce them.
And we need to draft the complaint form.
This, uh, this one has not gone to any attorney yet either, so that should go to town attorney or zoning attorney.
The voice is pretty much ready for us.
Yeah. So basically, we're putting. The opinion of this one person on the plate. Of course, for like. So. We had talked about this and weren't sure how to conduct this. Uh, I remember having this discussion a long, a long time ago and. The thought was, I can't remember what was with, um, that we'd have, if, if, if somebody called and complained about blade. Um, the, the blade enforcement officer would go out there and then bring that to a board of people. So it wasn't just one person saying, yeah, I'm gonna find them for their blade, because.
Right, it's gonna be like somebody maybe some shows, social services.
Yes.
There's something in case that I did a painting of your neighbor or something or somebody else related.
Right. And then, right, you find them for their unpainted house and the fines more than it would cost to paint the house, they can't afford either one. So I, I believe there, I thought we rectified that in here about having. Appeal to.
Yeah, you appeal to an individual and I think that's our left problem. Less, less than the fines, I think. This is where Jonathan's story becomes relevant, is finding solutions. And the discussion of these things. Um, penalizing an individual that doesn't have the resources. It's not going to result in, in any benefit, uh, to the talent, to the individual. It's a matter of finding a solution of where the resource may exist. So in lieu of going to a, you know, a hearing with an individual. If there was a, um, you know, a. Panel of representatives from. Say, um, zoning, U C B A, the selectmen, the housing authority, public works, health sanitation, E D C and social services. That's the list. And you would have a group that might have the means to offer the appropriate assistance to find a solution as opposed to, um. Penalizing an individual, so. Um, I think that that might be the approach that. Um, would be beneficial to the town, you could address blighted properties. And, um, you know, share the responsibility from.
I, I don't blame that idea with all those people, but then there might be that level of kind of, um. Not embarrassment, but you know, and then we're kind of airing your whole, your whole business out to quite a panel of people. So maybe we have a little bit too, we, a smaller group or something than, you know.
Well, so I think, well, I think, yeah, so like, if you get somebody, you, you know that they're gonna in social services, you kind of can tell that. There is a part at the end, uh, I made special consideration. Yeah. Uh, notwithstanding anything, you're in to not a very special consideration may be given to individuals who demonstrate that the violation results from inability to maintain. Only residence, but it goes on to appeal. So. I think there is an out in there that, you know, if my grandmother can't cut her grass, there's an out for this. Right. Um.
Then maybe that group talks, so they don't have to necessarily have the person that can say all of those.
Right, right. But when it comes to a decision where there's potentially fines and, you know, punitive, uh. Implications. Uh, it can't be on one individual and, um. And as long as there's a mechanism, and it might be before it gets to a hearing, something like that, obviously. You know, anybody with a vested in the. The boards, commissions and departments that would have a vested interest or ability to affect it, it should be engaged. And maybe the point of contact is with. You know, initial point of contact and deliver selecting a special, maybe the daddy group brought it's based on. You know, what the specifics of the. Situation are.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but.
But I think it should be set. Not stone, but maybe the board of select should. Appoint the three people or the four, however many there are. So that it's specific. It's not, oh, I'm gonna call Jane today, but somebody else tomorrow.
Yeah. The important piece of this that was on that panel. Would there would be somebody from a perspective of advocacy or social services or some, you know. That there's gotta be an advocate for the individual because. You know, having heard discussions about. Blame. And or opinion of aesthetics. Um. It's, it's not a easy thing to make a determination on. It's very subjective and, um. And, yeah, you. You gotta recognize it to lots of other situations.
So this give us some more room to say. Um. Sort of papers on somebody who has nine cars on their property or that sort of a thing, because there was more teeth for that. On my just.
At the discretion of property, see, I, there's item four, at the discretion of property maintenance officer, to contact their first town street services for the purposes of encouraging social work assistance for those who need it. Uh, there's probably should be words, should be swapped out for a meeting with, let's just, they, the property maintenance officer should meet with. Whoever's in that list that we came up with, um, so. Whoever's in that list that we came up with, um so those planning and zoning authorities, like miss. To determine if the fines are by.
And maybe the advocacy element of this uh would have. Access to a set of informational pieces or individuals who will volunteer to support to. Help connect the information on registration or licenses or car regable or any of that. I think some. That's a missing piece, how to how to actually execute.
Well, that that's, but in that case, that's actually a state law. The so so there are laws in place that are beyond our ordinance. You aren't allowed to have uh beyond X amount of vehicles in your yard. Per per Connecticut state law. And that's. That isn't even up for us to enforce.
I don't know, are we enforcing it now, people?
We actually did use dark, there's a. Forget the number, but if you call the D M V, there's an actual place they can do some of this and they just haven't been doing it. So.
So sometimes there's um. I we try to regulate things with um penalties, but the um more effective way sometimes incentive. So if in lieu of putting in um. The regulation that has. Now penalties, which is gonna cause the town to enforce. Instead, there was a budget in place. Um just like for town beautification. A modest budget uh that was put in place discretionary to either that committee or the selectmen. Um to address the situations. Um because again, it's always a matter of, you know, whose pockets are gonna come out to enforce this and how we're gonna do it. If there's, if it's um detrimental to the town, a property that. May may be maintained if there was a modest budget in place that uh provides an incentive to. Turning up these, you know, the properties, just like E D C would have. Um and a certain purification or uh social services would have assistance for other things. Um maybe it's a budget item more so than a um.
A team involved here in helping.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep, you got scouts. Maybe we could have a uh a pro bono.
Group, yeah. Oh, different off stuff. So this one's on you. The uh, okay, uh anything else for the property maintenance code?
We have other plans where we can grab some mentions and stuff off of them.
We had, we had um. Had like a bunch of other towns. I think we're gonna try and come up with an an average like we did sending it's only stuff. So we held off because still wanted to make sure that.
Yes, they were broke. The selectmen have to do on figuring out. Who would be the. The officer doing this and what upon could be where we what is.
So you you would have to figure out, uh, find an appeals person in the um. And then a fourth person. And still. Right, for the money. The hard. Okay, uh ordinance is short tormentals. Um so. This has come up um a bunch of times and I. Again. Always easier to steal somebody else's regulations through them. So we did that um. So that from Essex. And so this, we did this one, we thin this out a lot. They had a lot of regulations and stuff they were trying to do. And basically, this came about. Really Airbnb's. There are a bunch in town and there's no way to know where they are, who to go, who has them and are they safe? Um so. That's how this uh uh came forward. So it would require, you know, the health department to check on it and say, yes, it's a place that's safe for. Right on that kind of thing. And they would have to register with the town um so we would know where they are. And, you know, keep an eye on them like just any other business. Like field. Where does enforcement fall on this one? Is it only? Uh, let's see, it's been a while since we went through this, so. I think they register with the select here.
At one point, we said, you got to have an enforcement person on there, just.
Yeah. Yeah, this, it's it's just enforcement officer.
This wouldn't be zone.
Authorized enforcement official. Yeah, I don't think we, you just said enforcement officer, because we weren't sure how that part was gonna be handled.
It might, it might be shared responsibility because it goes to use. Whether it be zones where a Airbnb would not be. I mean, nothing, you know, whatever, which basically does fall under zoning, uh zoning. Permission for for zoning permit. But the operation of it would falls sometimes else. We have a transcript that then will.
So how, so people know that somebody has an Airbnb, but it is not reported, except when they're in a problem, so we can tell them all or whatever, report it.
Well, yes, so like Alan said, if it's in, we we would have to know about it because we'd have to see it and then the commercial zone. Well, it's not allowed, and so we would have to send them in season, correct?
But if somebody can kind of like run out their neighbor that way.
That, yeah, uh we were thinking, when we did talk about this, I mean, we maybe just. Uh put it in the paper, the down paper, like, hey, by the way, at the beginning of the year, you're gonna have to register your Airbnb.
Why, I guess, like, just people have come in, like, I guess, North Main Street, some of those crap and floor. Businesses are really apartments.
Yeah.
It's like, well, why did they get to live on their first floor, you know, allowed here? They said, well, they get away with it because somebody she reported it. So it's like, well. I was somebody who. Some like, some people go knock on the door and tell it's an apartment, they will.
I haven't, no one has brought that to 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 me yet, so. Well, yeah, I mean, some of that would be like if I, you know. I was gonna sort of find out and say, well, if I can't find evidence of it, which. If unless I'm going out in the middle of the night, see someone sleeping there, which I won't be doing because I live forty minutes away. Um and I'm definitely, you know, whatever. But um if I were to say like, hey, it's like this, the this. The permit gives for this building um.
That's. This is always one of those issues to have somebody chase these things down or. But the 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 reason to have it an ordinance in place is because if it's problematic, you have the means by which to correct. And there's two gates. One is in the initial use and occupancy, which would be a zoning issue. And then the other one's in operations, which has to do with. Um it it's. Very much a matter of tax revenue damage. It's um. That's that becomes a.
Right, but I do, I like a big safety component in this. There are so many that, you know, because I, after the issue we had. But then you go on to Airbnb and, you know, those things. And there's quite a lot in there. And then some are these tiny little bedrooms that are over garage and, you know, there's no, there's no secondary means of egress. You're like. This looks so sketchy, you know, and you're just worried that there are like maybe a fire trap. I'd like it so that at least the fire marshal knows that it's fact and, you know, so.
I had a question about that. So section three one says that um other permits to allow town officials, is that what we're saying? Is town officials. We're including like the fire marshal or crud or health department, because the rules that we're making abide by are basically health department rules. They are rules.
Right, a bedroom through the building code has certain requirements, like you, like she, like Carol just said, was, you know, you need means of egress for a bedroom. So. You know, you can't, you can't have somebody sleeping in your basement if they can't get out.
Right, so, huh, that I'm sorry, that just gave me a thought.
I knew, sorry, yeah, the way that was worded, sorry.
Uh yeah, I think that's a whole different thing, Tony.
It's not what I meant.
But second, so section three one C, so it says other authorization for town officials perform inspections both externally, internally. Um so we're just, so that's good enough to. Basically, any uh health department, town official is any uh uh. Who is town official? I guess that's, that's the thing.
Yeah, so crabs are are health official, um you know, Dick Clayton's our our building official, Joey's our enforcement officer. So those those people can all go look.
We can just leave it general. And and so I'm not, I'm not seeing it. I believe it was removed. I wanted to be sure it was removed. There was uh. There was a clause before that restricted Airbnb's or rentals only, you're only allowed to own own one.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing that anymore. That is removed.
Took that out then.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
What else? And move on to planning zone. So um this is a quick one. This is, so we went through the original planning and zoning ordinance, reworded it because it had. Two sets of conflicting uh fee schedules in it. So we actually voted on the new fee schedule last year. Here, the year before, all of London together now. Okay, and um so uh at Ken's. Suggested we take the old stuff right out of this. That way it's just under planning and zoning's roof. We can go back through if we need to revise any of our fees, you know. Um I know the state just went up on Airbnb, so we will probably have to look at that again. And the only other change that was in here is to unexempt the town. Um so the town is, the town owned properties are exempt from zoning at the moment. And my biggest part on that is we have an excellent Z B A. Why shouldn't the town go to Z B A just like everybody else? If you can't be the town and say, well, you have to abide by all these zoning rules. But the town doesn't have to. So that's my take on that. Uh. There's, there's, like I said, there's a way to get the stuff done. Was there any comment?
The other towns. For the C B A, Tony?
Yep, there are, I think, just three, three towns in all Connecticut that have exemptions from their own regulations.
So, yeah, other than that, there's, there's no real change to the the regulation. Okay, I get, yeah. It's not sidewalk, so next. Alright, so we took the sidewalk ordinance that's in there. Um and so the existing ones added everything that was in red. So we had um stuff about public sidewalks. Actually, everything that's in red and blue. So um red was everything that we discussed at planning and zoning. Um basically, you know, you gotta make sure your sidewalks cleared and all that stuff, which is, yeah, that state statute anyway. Um there was a discussion about how much of the sidewalk downtown. Has to be free and clear obstruction. So I went to connect at D O T standards and they require a five foot clear path be made for all sidewalks and shared uses and. Unlimited walk, but so basically you can't each five feet because that is what was required for A D A compliance. It's just a five, five foot path. It could be in the middle, it could be left or right. Cause we have a pretty wide sidewalk, so that uh you have to maintain a five foot path.
Well, you and I talked about keeping stuff away from the curb too. So can we? You know, I, the one property that I'm obviously is the collectibles place.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he's got stuff on. Yeah, both sides. So I'm like, oh, he puts it on the side, but the building is well, red house is a good place. I guess that's reasonable, but it's on both sides. And that bothers me. It's like, let's move this down.
We can add that, uh, everybody just asked that I look up to the O T one, but if if you think it should be from the five feet from the curb. That's fine with me.
You want a clearance? Right now, it's it's Carol saying it's messy. It's not attractive.
As long as it's, as long as it's a continuous, um not non-interrupted path, that's down. Because as you said, it is, there's a point of this is a street tree. That was preclude.
Right.
Somebody from having, you know. It it's it's not within their control, but if they can provide a path for somebody in a chair with a, with a, you know, a. Guide dog, um then everybody has access. It's if you say go from the curb.
Right, the trees and the like.
Trees in the way, yeah, because now they follow the good ordinance. I can bring that stuff out to. By rights, that's right, right? But if we say it's coming from the curb.
Yeah.
So let's go in front of the red house. The curb's here, and you have a tree here.
Yeah.
I'm coming from the red house up to here. As long as there's five feet from the curb there.
Yeah.
You're gonna have a space this wide, so you gotta be careful.
Yeah, we go straight to the D N T like, so like twenty feet from the curb or fifteen.
Next, I mean, it's the town's ordinance, you can make whatever it was. I just looked up what the O T standard was.
Yeah, so we're gonna push down both. Bottom line, personally, this one should be permitted as long as you're allowing people to navigate safely in town on the sidewalks. With, you know, um. In every government, I think we should allow this system to. Uh but you have some recourse.
We ask them, they can't keep anything all overnight or something. I mean, like. Well, again, red house. So I just like when you go to a sidewalk sale, they roll the racks out, they roll the racks in, and now they're all night. Like, it's just an eyesore. And then to sort of address it in a nice way. So again, we have that recourse to say, you know, you can't leave public. I think it's a sense of aesthetic. I know that has to be a slip for school, that's what my aesthetic made up of your aesthetic, but. I'm in complete agreement with Carol on this point. That is, it's not attractive. It doesn't add. Do the, you know, the visual to the town.
What if this, what if, has, has anybody spoken with them yet? About?
I have not, you can.
So we're just gonna write it over and just say, hey. Pull this in.
That's still done. In 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 time to pass, you had friendly little, you know, you're approaching a little bit here, people. Complain, can you?
Did it work to him?
You know, but I'm supposed to be specific. So. We don't, yeah, we don't wanna call on anybody specific. I mean, if you're, if the other thing you can do is say, uh, you know. There's has to be a five foot clear path beginning at the face of a minivan, right? Trying to, trying to word this, so anything from the side, because you have to still, if you're in that five foot path and. Both sides of the sidewalk are blocked, you can't get to the, your cars.
Can't get to the street, get in your car.
Right, you can't get in your car. So there has to be, I I trying to word that correctly.
Or your car, you try to get out of your car and get onto the sidewalk and you can't. That may be a little bit difficult in some situations.
Another, another approach would be that you have to have a permit to have anything in front of your business. And then within that permit, it would have that you have to remain X number of feet clear from the curb. And then within that permit, you would say whether or not it has to be cleaned up at the end of business each day. Versus, you know, maybe for a cafe for tables, that's not practical, but that could be a checkbox in the permit. And then we don't have to have the ordinance. I mean, it would just, well, the ordinance would be that not allowed without a permit. Period. I mean, that's the way they handle it in Manhattan, and we pay for, we pay huge money for that permit at our shop there.
There's also. So what if we're to say that there's, you maintain a five foot path that um allows for unobstructed travel law. Unobstructed safe travel along the sidewalk and that uh, you know, no. Nothing can be left uh that would inhibit uh parking or access to vehicles or normal use of the road. You know. That's not, that's not what I'm trying, that you can't continue the use, the normal use of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
We're gonna be, you know, you get safely from your car to to the right way and uh the right way. Which is pedestrian path on the sidewalk. Bottom line is um. Sidewalk does not belong to. Property owner if sidewalk extends. Close to their building and within the property line, they should be able to do what they want within that widened sidewalk if it is in fact their property. We can't, I don't think we can regulate that, except with a perhaps a light one. But um. If it's part of the public way, it should just clearly state that you can. Just clearly state that you can impinge on the. Uh, pedestrian. Use or vehicle use of the public way. In which case then. Do you even demonstrate, yeah, like placing the tables there, replacing. Objects there or plants there. In a structure and you can regulate it. And ask them to remove. Personal property.
And that would take care of access and then possibly put something in there that. Addresses merchandise versus. Tables and chairs for a restaurant, it's kind of difficult to bring that stuff inside, but merchandise is another thing, you gotta bring your merchandise in at night to not leave it on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so any merchandise and stuff on the sidewalk after the business hours becomes property covered domain.
Well, um, I was gonna say, I can come to some of the, the other side of the, that comes from, they both, they both, but it's not bound, bring it in, yeah, so.
Yeah, the differentiation between retail and best. Merchandise is not allowed to stay out.
Anything else for sidewalks? If not. It's gonna be motion to return. Ready?
Motion to attack.
I second that.
Why, that's very sloppy, okay.
Thanks, guys.